What do you have for us today?
Two items today, sir. We have, I think Jason was on the phone. Jason Watkins is here. He was out on his cellphone. We're going to talk about, him and Mike are going to talk about legislative agenda, kind of close up how things went in 2019 and successes and failures and maybe talk a little bit about 2020 just very briefly. That's item number one. And then item number two is we have a presentation and we're going to spend some time talking about the Northeast Park up at Furley this morning. So with that, I hate to make Jason wait because he waited in here two weeks ago. We never did get him to on, but he's, Mike, do you want to start or cover for him?
Well, I can make it your.
Is Jason still on the phone out there?
Yeah. You know, this last session was a little different from our perspective. Will Derry, of course, doing a bunch of legislative work from the legal department prior to this year and he laughed and liked him. So not having him around, because he had a lot of legislative experience, obviously Jason ran, but you hear that my department helping draft some with the revised office and what he's been there and working on drafting some testimony on several things that Jason's going to talk about today. We get to future steps and we talk about moving forward with maybe getting at least a couple of our legislative priorities on the Kansas Association of Counties platform, which we will do again next year. We can discuss that later. I'll turn it back to you.
Good morning.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'll just kind of go through, like Mike said, kind of a quick update on some of the things that were on our legislative agenda. Some of them we got passed. Some of them, put this in a positive light, remain future opportunities for us. So on behavioral health, that was obviously a win, although it got a little dicey right at the very end, but there was the 1.9 million for the Crisis Center funding. We've had some discussions about what you do with that money in the budget moving forward. That's going to become a much more stable, less controversial area of funding. That Crisis Center funding was intended to be funded through the, a portion of the profits from the lottery vending machines. Those didn't get put out into the market last year, so kind of had to take a different approach to that appropriation. Those machines are now launching in the market. I think Topeka has eight of them or something along those lines. So that's going to become a much more stable stream of funding moving forward. The mental health K through 12, K through 12 Mental Health Pilot Program was mentioned as we were working on our agenda last year. Great program. That's a local state representative that kind of put the effort behind creating that pilot. Another one that was kind of challenged as the session went along, I think maybe legislators, some legislators didn't have a complete understanding of what that program did and the successes that it's already had so far. You know, nothing's free. Mental health is obviously a critical component in what the state does and it's not cheap. And so when you have dollars attached to certain efforts, they oftentimes do come under attack, but that did survive. We've had a talk, talks about regionalized state mental health center. There was no funding put forward to solve that problem for us. I can tell you, however, that conversation continues to progress. I know the manager and counselor and you, Mr. Chairman, have had some conversations with some state legislators. I know Commissioner Cruz has as well. I met with some business leaders recently that expressed interest and asked the question if we could, if we could do something with the San Antonio model, is there an opportunity for the private sector to step in and contribute and help? And so I thought that, I took that as a positive sign that, you know, over the next year or so, hopefully we see some progress. We are the largest community without a state mental health facility. So that was behavioral health. I can move on to key policy or I can stop and answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
A couple of questions real quick. First of all, the regional mental health facility is separate from the San Antonio model. We want to make sure we don't combine those because we need a regional mental health facility here to take care of the needs because we can't get people into Lorna and Osawatomie. But the San Antonio model is something that we're working in a different area. I just don't, I don't want to combine those so that it looks like one, one thing is going to solve both issues. And I appreciate that we've still got the K-12, the mental health pilot that's going on right now in the middle schools, but somehow we need to expand that. I'm hoping that they can say, see from our results that we've had so far that it's working. And I know I've got some of the surrounding school districts in Sedgwick County that are interested in having that same project working in their schools. So I don't know how we get them to, what kind of data that we need to provide in order for them to see that we need to expand it.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, the more that that can be communicated with policymakers, the better. I was kind of alluding to in my comments that I still think we have a number of policymakers in Topeka that don't necessarily understand everything that that pilot program does and why the cost, why the cost is what it is with that program. You know, you're hiring mental health experts to help intervene with these kids and of course, that's, that's not cheap. But you mentioned the data and the folks behind the pilot program can point to lives saved, not just lives improved, lives saved. And so I think when policymakers hear from folks like all of you instead of just other policymakers, I think that makes a difference. So I'm certainly happy to increase our lobbying efforts on that, but I think more, the more they can hear from folks like you and other constituents, I think that would help maybe broaden that program.
And I hope they understand that the amount of money they put in, a million dollars in it from what I recall, that does not come close to funding the program. The rest of the funding comes through people that are insured and Medicaid and so forth. So the little bit that they're putting in, I know a million dollars, I can't say as a little bit, but it doesn't come close to what we need in order to be able to do that. So we're picking up the balance. That million dollars is only paying for the people that are totally uninsured and can't get on Medicaid.
Commissioners, do you have anything?
I have one more question. I, thank you, Chairman. I was just curious if you anticipate whether or not the state will continue to try to connect lottery, lottery machine revenues as a source of revenue for the Mental Health Community Crisis Center programming, funding for Sedgwick County? Because I think that's going to be problematic and I don't know why we're being singled out to have that type of revenue here versus other parts of the state that are, seem to have appropriations in other parts of the budget.
Certainly understand your concern and point. I don't know that I can tell you how long the, or what the probability is that that continues to be the funding stream. I can tell you kind of the history of that and I'll leave the names out of it, but a bill, an amendment came to the floor a couple of years ago, I believe it was an amendment that would allow for these lottery vending machines. There was a state representative that hasn't necessarily probably been the biggest fan of expanding lottery programs, that then came down with an amendment to say that a portion of the profits from those lottery vending machines would go to fund the community or the crisis mental health. You know what I'm trying to say? So I understand your concern and I'm sure other policymakers in Topeka do as well, but I think the, the effort there on the amendment that created that funding stream was well-intended because it was done by somebody that's very concerned about mental health and the mental health situation in the state.
Well, whether or not that revenue ever, ever developed to be adequate funding for that or not, that's to be determined, I suppose, but regardless, we still have the same needs as any other large urban community in the state of Kansas. I think Johnson County probably has money appropriated in the budget for their mental health needs.
Well, so I think this Crisis Center funding was for three communities, not, not just us.
Okay. Thank you.
What kind of things are you doing to familiarize yourself with what's going on in our community? Currently today, we have a mental health coalition that's going on today. There's a focus group that is focused on community organizations. There's one tomorrow for parole and probation. There's one on the 15th for providers and there's one on the 18th for youth service providers. So I just wonder, you know, as you understand the crisis better, you're able to communicate that to legislators. So what are you doing to familiarize yourself with our crisis in our community?
You know, I attend things like that when I get an invitation. I, you know, if I'm not aware of them, I'm not going to be able to attend. But I also represent, besides the county, other interests such as the Wichita Chamber and where chambers involved in, in this. So plenty of communications with the police chief, the sheriff, the district attorney. But you know, my communication with policymakers is driven by my clients. So when the manager or assistant manager or county counselor or you as commissioners communicate things with me or provide me with information, that's what I communicate.
Any other questions on mental health?
Behavioral health?
Information on those focus groups. There is a meeting today in Topeka. I think it's the school board meeting where they're going to look at the applications for expansion in the school program. We know that we've had two suburban communities talk to us about their willingness or their desire to be part of the pilot program. And then I think USD 259 may be interested in expanding as well. So we should know something later today or tomorrow about whether or not those schools were added to the pilot program.
Have we communicated with Kathy Bush and Jim McNeese, our two representatives from this area?
Yes, we have.
So they know to advocate for us? Okay. And if you need us to contact them, we'd be happy to talk to both of them. Okay? Any other questions on behavioral health? All right, Jason, what do you got next?
Next was under the key policy areas of the agenda. So just kind of quickly, they're permit counties to publish any statutorily required legal notices on the internet. There was a bill that was introduced. That bill didn't go anywhere. I think as I've expressed in some of our conversations, you know, as much sense as that makes, there's one particular business entity that owns a lot of small newspapers throughout the state. I would imagine that these government publications are probably the lion's share of that business's income and that business is very, very active in opposing that.
But the bill, the bill was optional.
It's a newspaper company.
The bill was optional. If you, in western Kansas, you recognize if you're a politician that you have some people that are influential and that need that revenue to keep their newspapers alive. So that's why the bill was optional so that they could say, hey, we'd still want to publish it in the newspaper. But when you're looking at something like Sedgwick County or Johnson County or any of those, why, it's not what's keeping it alive. If it's, if it's what's keeping the newspaper alive, then they've got more problems than this.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if that makes him feel any better about that legislation, but we'll, we'll keep pushing.
Okay.
Well, the issue is, I think they know that even in western Kansas or a smaller community, they're not going to continue to do it if they're not mandated. That's why they stop it or push to stop it. They're just not going to. Because then it comes down to, do you hire a new sheriff's deputy or do you put ads in a paper? So, yeah.
Okay. Well, I still think that it's something that we need, at least for Sedgwick County.
Yes, sir. We had a legislative agenda item that was to support legislation to provide that vacant properties shall not be used as comparable properties to value occupied properties. This is known as the dark store theory. We were not taking the lead on that, although we were concerned about it. I think as we were entering the session, we had the understanding that, that the Association of Counties was working on a bill and was going to move forward with that. That didn't really materialize, I think, maybe as we thought it was going to. So nothing really happened on that issue. And then, of course, I think there was a recent ruling by the Court of Tax Appeals on the dark store theory that didn't, that basically went against Johnson County. So I would assume this is an issue that other counties and the Association of Counties are going to be wanting to work on in the next legislative session.
KAC had it on their legislative agenda, as I recall, but it just didn't get worked.
Talking with the counselor about that, you know, they had some staff changes and a lot of those changes were occurring as the session was coming up, so.
Any questions on dark store? I'm pretty familiar with it.
Support legislation that allows a voter to go to any polling place on Election Day. This one was a win for us, maybe a little harder than you would think it needed to be, but I guess the system's designed to be that way. We did ultimately get that passed. That will not be an opportunity though for voters in this 2019 election cycle. And for those that aren't familiar, this legislation that was passed, when we're leading up basically to the two weeks to Election Day, you can go to any of these advanced polling, advanced voting locations and vote, but on Election Day, you have to go to your specific polling location. And in the last election, I think there were several thousand people that on Election Day went to the wrong polling place and then our commissioners who are the Board of Canvassers or whatever that term is, you know, have to go through and decide if these votes get counted or not. And I think a lot of legislators agreed that didn't make sense. If you can do it for the two weeks leading up to Election Day, then why can't you do it on Election Day? So we did ultimately get that passed. Language in the bill calls for the Secretary of State to make the rules and regs for that. Secretary Swab has some concerns about voter security, protecting the polling locations, and he will not have the rules and regs written in time for the 2019 elections. Believes that he will for the 2020 elections.
Well, I appreciate the work you did on that because you got two bills combined that made it through and that was one of our main things that we wanted on our legislative I hope that as we move forward, I don't see why we couldn't have done it in 2019. Okay, I want to make sure that everybody's clear on that. But as we, the reason I say that is because 2020 is going to be a big election. If we could make sure that everything works in 2019, it would give us a lot more confidence going into 2020 that, and I don't have any doubt that it's going to work in 2020, but it gives us an opportunity to test it at least in 2019. But the second part is I think we need to lobby the Secretary of State to make sure the rules are general, that whatever he comes down with, because what happens in Sedgwick County with Wichita here is completely different than what happens in Wichita County in western Kansas. And whereas 105 counties, he can't write rules that are going to apply to all 105 counties or his rules are going to be this thick. He needs to say, these are the general guidelines and I want each of the counties to submit how that they're going to comply with those guidelines, rather than him trying to write a book that's going to apply to 105 counties. We're never going, it's going to be 2095 before we get that book written, okay? So hopefully as you lobby for us, you can talk to the Secretary of State and say, please keep, tell us what we need to do to put in our plan and let us write the plan and tell you how that we're going to make it work, rather than you try and write something that's going to work for 105 counties.
Any other commissioners have anything on that one?
Very good.
Final thing on, on the primary agenda was the nuisance abatement. Another one that we worked pretty hard on, including up to the very end, but as, as the commissioners will recall, Mr. Chairman, counties are different entities than cities, obviously, and just don't have the same tools. And so I thought we came up with a very reasonable approach to nuisance abatement for, for counties. We did introduce a bill. One of our assistant county counselors came up to testify on that bill and we were met at the door to the hearing room by the Kansas Livestock Association who told us they were opposed to the bill. We sat down with them and went, why would you be opposed? Well, they had five or six things in the bill that they thought threatened property rights. We literally adjusted that right there and then presented to the committee that here's the changes the KLA wants, Sedgwick County's in support of that. Again, this was a very reasonable bill that, that just would have allowed Sedgwick County or any county that has an urban area designation to go in and abate these nuisances. We did get that out of committee. We had some property rights folks that I don't think frankly understood the bill very well, that really worked over the weekend. We got that bill out of committee on a Friday. We were up against a deadline because of turnaround. So we got that bill out of committee on a Friday. It had to be dealt with on the floor by Tuesday. We had some property rights folks that worked legislators pretty hard over the weekend and ultimately we didn't get the votes that we needed to, to move it on the floor. This would be one of those issues where I think some work out of session, ahead of session, especially with some of our local delegation would be helpful. I think if, if any of the commissioners who have legislators that cover some of these areas where we have concerns and/or county staff, and I'm always happy to join, but frankly, I think we just need to put some legislators in cars and drive them out and say, this is what we're talking about. We are an urban area. We are very different than rural counties. And so you do have areas in, in Sedgwick County that are very populated. They just don't happen to be in the city limits and it's not acceptable to have garbage pile that's taller than a house right next to where people are living. So I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I know this is a, a point that you care a lot about. We need to get it done. I think it's just going to require some more work.
Very good. Well, we need to keep working on it and I've got a huge pile out in western Sedgwick County that I could be glad to take anybody that wants to go see that. We've been working on it two and a half years and it still exists today.
Any questions from any commissioners?
Is that, is that bill just, is this still alive or is it, is it actually a dead bill? Because we have another year here.
Yeah, now that, as we go in Commissioner to the next session, that bill would be eligible to, to be worked again.
It did come out of committee, right?
It did come out of committee.
It sat below the line and I'm not sure what happened to it at that point, but.
Well, there weren't the votes.
Right. So I mean, but it was it, was it, I think it was actually killed by leadership as it sat below the line. It's, it actually is a dead bill. We have to start over again.
No, sir, that's not correct. We don't have to start over again. We're still, it'll be year two of a biennium and so any of those bills that, that we can, we can resurrect them as the new session starts. There, there is another bill that is below the line that we attempted to amend on to through the Commerce Committee that dealt with blighted properties. That's still an opportunity because I know there's a lot of interest in that. So there's several avenues in terms of bills that are still alive that we can work on.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on nuisance?
Other than it's just, it's very critical. And, and I think Commissioner Dennis and I see it more because we have districts that are more rural and when the cities can handle all this stuff and we can't because they're out in the county, it's a, it's a big, I mean, it really is a big problem, but I think that's why you'll see us push for that more.
Yep, absolutely. We had some things on our secondary agenda. I think the commissioners are aware, but since they were on our agenda and we didn't do anything with, I wanted to go ahead and cover them just so the rest of staff and the public understood. We, we had on our agenda to deal with daylight savings time. There was a bill that was introduced.
Let's not even talk about that. It took all the oxygen out of the air, front page of the newspaper, forgot all this stuff that was important.
Yeah. So we moved on.
Well, if Dial Lefler was here, that'd be the article today.
Yeah, that'd be the headline tomorrow morning.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Well, we'll just move on from everything on the secondary agenda because there's another one on here that might get attention too. So other than that, just a couple of other things I thought worth mentioning. I thought county staff did a tremendous job assisting me in Topeka on the 911 funding issue. There was a bill that was introduced that was intended to actually help with 911 funding and by the time, actually a local representative was done with that bill on the floor, it was going to cut our funding to our 911 operations. So our director came up. She did a fabulous job explaining how that formula actually works and what the impact would be to Sedgwick County's 911 operations. Chairman Masterson in the Senate was happy to work with her and did address that. So while that wasn't something that was on our agenda, I think at the end of the day, that was certainly a win for us. And then I wanted to just kind of talk about transportation funding very quickly. We're obviously concerned about the North Junction. I know, Mr. Chairman, you and I have had a lot of conversations over the years about the Northwest Bypass. And so several bills were introduced this year that collectively were supposed to kind of lay the, the foundation for a new comprehensive transportation program. A few of those advanced, most of them did not because they deal with, with funding. So you had folks that were opposed to increases in the fuel tax or, or different permits, et cetera. I, I think you'll see progress next year on moving towards a comprehensive transportation program. One positive in every single one of those hearings for every single one of those bills in the House and the Senate that dealt with the transportation program, are somebody from our local community, whether it was me or somebody else, was there to talk before every committee about the problem that we have with the North Junction, to the point that I think our Secretary of Transportation finally started to see it as almost comical and then said, hey, look, you know, we want legislators to know we get it and it is a priority. So I think we don't have a lot of legislation to point to in terms of success on the North Junction or the transportation program yet, but we certainly had the opportunity to tell our story and legislators even outside of the South Central Kansas region, I think see the, the North Junction as a, as a priority, so.
I would like to just say something about that. So it'll be two weeks ago this week, the secretary came down and Commissioner Dennis and I had a meeting. I know Commissioner Howland, Commissioner Dennis said before, but the secretary specifically mentioned that, that Sedgwick County had groups of people every time there was a transportation item that affected Sedgwick County. And it wasn't just North Junction, it was Northwest Bypass or other issues with Kellogg, you name it. And she said that makes a huge difference. And it's a lot further for our people to drive than Johnson County or obviously Shawnee County. So she said that made a difference and the Speaker of the House mentioned that you or your team are in every committee that legislation is ever in front of. And I don't think there's another lobbying firm up there that's able to cover every base like that, but when the Speaker of the House is acknowledging it, I, I just think it's huge kudos to you, but it's huge benefit to us to actually have live bodies because you know what's going on. And the fact that the Secretary of Transportation acknowledged it is, I, I think, a big deal.
I agree. Last week, as Commissioner O'Donnell said, we did, a week for last.
It will be two weeks, yeah.
With Secretary Lorenz. Also last week, I saw Senator Moran and reinforced with him that we need this INFRA grant for the North Junction. From what we have heard, that INFRA grant is going to be released somewhere in August, so a month or so from now, we'll, we'll be able to hear whether or not we're going to get that grant from the federal government for the North Junction. But if we don't get that, which we, we're hedging our bets, it looks like we do have probably 30 million or so coming out of the state. probably 30 million or so coming out of the state to cover that for the next phase. I'm talking the phase, not the one we're working on now, but the phase beyond that. So between what Secretary Lorenz is doing and Senator Moran, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think that we're going to get funding moving for the next phase. We do have the funding to 15 million, isn't it, to buy the right of way for the next phase? Isn't that what they've already promised us?
Yes.
So there's a lot moving on that. Commissioner Howland and I had a meeting with Secretary Lorenz also last, two weeks ago now, to talk about the Northwest Bypass. And so it looks like that the state of Kansas is going to fund the feasibility study to take a look at that as a toll road with barrierless tolling. And we can find out whether or not that that would work as a toll road. So we're moving forward on it also. So there's a lot happening. And as our engineer will tell you, that our transportation is the mother's milk of economic development. Take a quote.
Got that straight.
Yeah, he got it straight. So we're doing, we're doing a lot in this area. The best part of it, as has been mentioned a couple of times, is that we have the support of the business community and the surrounding communities because they all have a stake in this. So as long as we have that type of support, it's fantastic.
Any other questions on transportation?
All right. You got anything else for us today? Well, we're going to talk about our next agenda here briefly, I think, too.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman, in terms of reporting on the last session. I have mentioned it to the county councillor a little bit, that in terms of the next agenda, you know, we're, my firm would be excited to work on this as early as you would allow us to. We had an election last year and so there was some change on the commission. So we had some agenda items that, you know, we were kind of figuring out right as session was starting. And, you know, that can happen even when you don't have a transition through an election. But as many items as we could get started working on in the fall months, we would be excited to do that for you because I think it increases our probability of success.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Papoun, do you have recommendations, some ideas?
No, I agree with Jason's last statement. I think the earlier we get, the earlier we get involved with issues like nuisance abatement and we can help, so we're better off, better chance of that will get some significant movement. Certainly, our office would give him more support in this area and the full staff and some attorneys that want to work in this area, so we're agreed to do that. And again, I mentioned, I tried, called the councillor at the Kansas State County yesterday to see if he had a schedule. I'm guessing since the annual meeting is moved back to November this year, probably by about mid-September, we're going to be expected to give that some proposals. If any proposals we have statewide interest that we want to get and maybe nuisance abatement and all for that, probably need to get them up to the KAC. Have somebody have to talk to Lexley, maybe get them on their platforms.
Good. Well, one thing we didn't, we need to work all these things that are important, a couple of them that we'll not mention, we forgot about. But the things that are still live on our legislative agenda, we need to keep working. But one issue did come up the other day during some of my briefings that they give us, and that's our funding coming out of the state for corrections. So I don't know if you've got that on your list to talk about, but we need to take a look at funding coming down from the state for all of the different issues we've got involved in corrections because they keep cutting us and we can't afford that. Because it's now going to, things that should be funded by the state, we're going to have to pick up out of general fund. Was there anything else?
Any other things?
One other thing I'd like to just put out there is historically, the chamber and the city and us all separately do a legislative, like luncheon or evening. I'd like us to think about this coming late fall or early next year, looking at common ground with the city and the chamber and maybe co-doing something together where they, that way I think we'd get a better turnout of the delegation. So if you, if you're okay with that idea, I'd begin to talk with Bob about that and Gary and see if we couldn't put something together and have one large session instead of three separate sessions.
Good. Well, I haven't thought that we were as effective as we could be the last couple of years that we've had the little thing in this room. And so I think we could probably do something that works a lot better. And us combining with the chamber and with the city, I think that that has a lot of weight.
Okay, we're good. We'll work on that then.
Well, thanks for what you do for us up there. I'm glad you're in Topeka, not us.
Hey, Jason, what is your email address?
You can get me at Jason, so J-A-S-O-N, at WSKS.us.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Sorry you had to wait all the time last week.
It's educational.
Yeah.
All right, Justin's gonna, we'll shift gears to the Northeast Park and I think he's got a presentation that you should have a hard copy of in front of you.
Commissioner Justin Wagner is the county councillor.
I'm here to talk about the Northeast Sedgwick County Park. In particular, a little bit of background in terms of the park itself, some of the restrictions on what it can be used for as well as potential options for what it can be used for. In terms of information about the park, it's located pretty fairly remotely in the northeast part of the county, at 77th Street North and 127th Street East, being District One. It comprises three parcels, large parcels, ranging from 157 acres to 248 acres. Altogether, it's about 650 acres. This is a map of those three parcels, just an aerial map of them. This map shows the city limits for Valley Center Park City and Bel Air and Key Chai in relation to where this property is at. The closest city is Bel Air and it's approximately three miles away. But it's also worth noting that I think that particular portion of Bel Air is largely is undeveloped at this point. So I think it's probably closer to four miles from any actual developments within Bel About the park, the county obtained the property in 2011 from the city of Wichita. It was part of the settlement from the jail fees litigation that went on between the city of Wichita and the county. My understanding, this is before I worked at the county, but my understanding is that there had been pretty public discussions years before that, the city had planned to locate a landfill on this property. At this point, a portion of the park has horse trails. There's a small parking area, but the park is mostly undeveloped. There are not any buildings on the county land out there.
Isn't there a building there?
I don't believe so. Oh, there is. I'm sorry.
There's a barn up there.
My apologies. There's a barn out there. All right. Well, here's a couple of pictures out there. This is kind of the entrance, I think, into the park and I think where there is some trail development for horse trails and the like, as well as a map of the park. Here's the parking lot that's located out there. Again, this is about as developed of an area other than the horse trails that you see out at that park. So again, it's largely undeveloped. I wanted to talk a bit about the restrictions on usage. In particular, the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act, which is a federal act, has particular restrictions that apply. I'll address those in a little bit more detail here in a bit. Also, I'd had some conversations with, a couple of years back, with the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks and Tourism to see if there are any spotted skunk restrictions on this property. And they confirmed that there are not any spotted skunk restrictions on these three parcels. I'm not aware of any other restrictions. I mean, obviously, there may be issues such as zoning, floodplain, things like that that are applied generally across any properties, but I'm not aware of any other specific restrictions like the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act that apply to this property. Speaking about that act, it's a federal act and what it says is, in general, is that if you get money from the federal government to develop a park, to build a park, to buy land for a park, that that land is supposed to be used for public outdoor recreation uses. And there, I'll talk in a little bit of detail, but other than converting that designation to other real property, the intent is that that runs with the land, that restriction on usage. And the group that's in charge of that at the federal level is the Secretary of the U.S. Department of the Interior. They do have it administered locally by the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks and Tourism. So when county staff deals with items regarding these types of properties, they usually deal with state staff on it. So what this means is the county can't just go out and sell this property outright at auction because there are restrictions in place. The county has same provisions, the same act apply to other county properties like the Sedgwick County Park, Sedgwick County Zoo and Lake Afton Park as well. A good question would be, why do, why are there restrictions on this property? Because there were not any of these LWCF Act restrictions when we got the property from the city of Wichita. It was really a series of conversions. When the county constructed the Sedgwick County Extension Office in 1991, it converted about 13 and a half acres that were, had the parks designation to what was then the Kansas Coliseum Camper Park and later referred to as Weedman Park, which already had about 40 some acres. And then this added another, like 43 or four acres to that RV park, or camper park, I should say. When the county sold the Coliseum and the land adjoining it, which included Weedman Park, in 2011, the county converted that designation to the 650 acres referenced earlier. And more recent events for the county, two years ago, we hadn't adopted, we adopted a resolution that requested federal legislation be enacted to remove the LWCF Act restrictions from the Northeast Sedgwick County Park. No federal legislation's been enacted pursuant to that request from the county. At this point, if you're kind of painting with a broad brush, what options might there be with the park? There's really three and while I've listed three, none of these are mutually exclusive. They could be used some in tandem. And also, this probably isn't exhaustive. There's kind of some nuances of things you could do. But one would be you could continue the park with its existing usage. You could utilize the park for other outdoor recreation uses. And I'm going to, there's a few slides that talk to what options might be available there. You could convert all or part of this park designation to other property. And you have to get approval from the, ultimately, the Secretary of the Interior in order to do that. If you would do that with, let's say, one of these parcels, then you could either sell that parcel or use it for uses other than outdoor public recreation uses, if you would free it from those restrictions. Essentially have a free hand to do what you would wish to do with that freed up property. So these next three slides, I'm not going to read through all of them, but these are, I think, roughly 16 or 17 examples of things that the county could do that would be considered public outdoor recreation uses. And the state has indicated these are the types of things they consider acceptable. Some of these, of course, we already have in our existing parks, several of them actually. All right. So moving on, I did mention briefly the conversion process. If the county would seek to convert property like it's done before in this case, the federal law requires that the land would, that you would be converting the park restriction to would need to be at least fair market value and of reasonably equivalent usefulness and location compared with the land where, that's currently restricted in use. The conversion has to be consistent with a statewide outdoor recreation plan, which is a really big document that the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks and Tourism maintains. And then ultimately, the Secretary of the Interior makes the call on whether to approve that or not approve that. Some concluding thoughts here. I don't think that county staff on this item is asking for necessarily any kind of decision or determination today. The thought would be to kind of get some of the background and maybe get the conversation started and see what ideas U.S. Commissioners have on this. Just, you know, again, a summary, there's 650 acres of undeveloped property. There's certainly some federal restrictions that apply. There's a number of uses that it could be put to, but depending on what uses or what route you may wish to go with those properties, there's a lot of different review that would need to be completed by staff. Tim Kaufman, I think, would be here to answer any questions, you know, more specific to the parks, how perhaps how this park fits into the county's Parks Master Plan or any questions related to that. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions, too.
Thank you. Questions for Justin or Tim?
Mr. Mike, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I think, is this kind of new news? Back to the option slide, item three. Could we, to free this property up to be sold, could we convert all or part to other properties such as like Lake Afton?
The, Lake Afton is largely tied up. There are, there's potentially three different parcels that adjoin Lake Afton Park that are not subject to the LWCF Act provisions. One's 50 acres, one's 40 acres and another's 20 acres. So there's a potential there that if, you know, if the will of the commission was to transfer or convert that designation, if we got it approved, that we could convert, you know, some or all of that. And I don't know how the values shake out and what that would be, but that I think would be an option.
Yeah, if it has to be fair market value, I would think property next to Lake Afton would be at least worth, I mean, this is pretty desolate, Northeast Park.
And I think that's an accurate observation.
Was there, would be an objection to look into that further?
As staff, I don't have any objection. I think if your fellow commissioners would be interested in directing us to do that, I'd be happy to.
So we could freely use it any way we want, even internally, parks, sale, convert?
That's correct. If you remove those restrictions, I think you could, you know, whether it be, you know, to liquidate it, to use it for some other purpose, to sell it to somebody for a specific purpose, I think those are all options that would be on the table.
Okay. Well, I'd be in favor of that, but...
That's right. We're not here to vote on anything.
No, but I don't have any objection to, if they would move all the Lake Afton properties that aren't encumbered right now, I don't have a problem with that. Because I think Lake Afton's going to be a park, because it's already a park. It's expanding it to make it a larger park, it's not a problem. Right now, the East Park is not really functioning for us in any way, shape or form, so I don't have an objection.
Any other commissioners want to weigh in?
I think it's great. I guess I just wanted to make a couple of comments here that, number one, it is on the website. It's a little hard to find, but you have to go to Recreation under the website and you find a list of parks there. And it's listed there under the parks. But on the website, it doesn't give you what you can and cannot do. You can take the aerial tour. And I did that. And then there's a picture of the sign. Now, on the sign, it says that what's prohibited is motorized vehicles, bicycles, camping, hunting, fishing. I guess I don't know where that list came from, if that's negotiable. We ought to maybe talk about what we would allow out there. But I think bicycles, for example, would be very reasonable. So I guess I'd like to loosen that list up a little bit. And it's very restricted. It's also dusted on. And if there's, actually, on that link, there's a place that says, "Park Rules." You click on that and it goes right to the MUNICODE Chapter 20. Doesn't really give you, you know, doesn't give you rules for that particular park. It just talks about general MUNICODE rules for all parks. So I think we could do some cleanup there. I guess I would like to challenge us a little bit to broaden up the applicable uses out there. But one thing we talked about, some of us went out to Butler County, they have a shooting range, for example, Butler County. It's pretty awesome. And I see that's on your list of things that could be done there. So I guess I'd like to see whether, whether we could do something really, if we're going to be stuck with this property, what can we do to make it, you know, interesting to the community that technically it's their park? I'd like to have a discussion about what we can do out there to make this interesting. We also talked recently about dog parks. Dog park out at Sedgwick County Park. Maybe a dog park might be more appropriate at Northeast Park, for example. I don't know that if we, why are we so restrictive out there? I think about things like an archery range would be a really nice thing to have. Not monitored, use it at your own risk, some kind of a list of rules when you come in. You know, it's a, use it at your own risk type of archery area that maybe the community could use. Would be another way to use that. So a number of things that could be done out there. And I'd just like to see us challenge ourselves. If we can't sell it, I'm in favor of selling it, if we can get that unencumbered. But if it can't be unencumbered, why don't we do some things that wouldn't cost a lot of money necessarily? Some things would. Shooting range would cost a lot of money. But there's things we got, we could do very simply just by changing the rules. I mean, bicycles? We don't allow bicycles on a park? To me, that's shocking, but thank you.
Commissioner, one of the reasons that the bicycles right now are prohibited was because of the horses. And what we've learned is that horses and bicycles don't always mix well on trails. But we could certainly think about segregating trails for that purpose. One of the things that we could do is do an RFI and see if there are any partners out there that would be interested in working with us on adding amenities. The other thing that we... that we could do is we could expand. In the future, we plan to do a refresh of the master plan that we have for Sedgwick County Park. And we could certainly talk to the architects that are going to do that work and have them do the same type of work at Northeast. That entails talking to the community and finding out what the highest needs are, what desired purposes are. So, that's certainly something that we could do as well.
I think any of the uses we just talked about are preferable to a landfill. So, in terms of the community impact, I think these are all things that we had to consider potentially, you know, trying to widen this up as much as possible. In the short term, though, I think the website could be improved a little bit in terms of trying to increase people to know what they can do out there. But I appreciate that answer. And I think it would be a good idea to challenge ourselves, however we do that, to segregate it out and to find some other uses for this area. Thank you.
Good. Well, I think we need to explore the possibility of transferring that over to Lake Afton and the encumbrances. The problem I have right now is we've got 650 acres sitting out there. Land around Sedgwick County is selling for about $2,500 an acre. So, we've got well over $1 million sitting there that if we had that and could invest that into our parks, I think it would be beneficial to the community.
Can we see how close this is to an electrical grid?
On the maps that I have, I wouldn't be able. We could, I think we could certainly come up with a map that would show that.
I mean, to see, like, if some of this could be lifted and shifted over to Lake Afton, what could we do? I mean, I know that the solar farm out at Maze was $400,000. I know it's a lot of money. But if we could figure out some way to utilize that space to either generate revenue as a, you know, a conversion system that would generate electricity that we could then sell possibly. I don't know that we're in the electrical business. But what could we do to utilize that land?
And I think one thing you could do along those lines would be if you freed up the restrictions. Because the, if wind or solar uses out there, for example, would not be a public outdoor recreation use, but you could sell it to a company who would, you know, you could have your agreement, say that you're going to use it for these particular purposes.
But if we lifted it, it could be used for anything.
Correct.
Is that right?
I'm just saying, if the will of the commission was to do that, you certainly could. And I, David, do you know where the closest electrical tie-in would be?
No.
Okay. And I don't, I apologize. I don't know that right now, but we can find that out.
Other questions?
All right. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Commissioners.
What do you have for us now?
That's all we had, sir.
Very good. Staff have anything around the table? Okay, electeds. Don, do you want to tell us about how you did yesterday?
Yes, there was 48 cards that were distributed and 13 were discharged. So, last year, we had 13 in prior year. So, the card, it really got the best... And this morning, I just got a...
Super. Commissioner Howland and I both have our discount cards. We appreciate what you did.
Used mine yesterday.
Used yours yesterday. Good. I don't have any money to spend, so I haven't used mine yet.
Probably helped to have...
Nobody quit bad for you.
Probably helped to have two male models promoting this program yourselves.
Thank you. Sheriff, you have anything for us this morning? Very good. Any other electeds here? Mr. Howland, Commissioner Howland?
Yeah, thank you. This coming Saturday, July 13th, there's a Sedgwick County Association of Cities meeting. We are a non-voting member of that meeting. And I've been pretty faithfully attending those meetings for a number of years now. This particular Saturday, we're hosting this, actually, at the Sedgwick County Zoo. And I think it's the Cargill Learning Center is where that plans to be held. And there's a 8:30 networking beginning time. The actual business meeting starts at 9 o'clock and usually lasts one hour. The reason I mention this is because I cannot attend this Saturday, and I would like it if somebody else, Commissioner or other staff, would be willing to attend on our behalf. Normally, we do provide a five-minute update from the county. And so, I've been doing that number for quite a long time. But I cannot do that this coming Saturday, so I'm asking for the room to respond to that attendance request. Thank you.
Thank you. And one reminder is that we have Sedgwick County Fair tomorrow, the parade tomorrow afternoon. And following the parade, I know all the Commissioners are invited to dinner and groundbreaking for the new building that is being built out there. So, I want to make sure that everyone gets invited to the Sedgwick County Parade and Fair tomorrow evening. And it is Sedgwick County, and it happens to be in District Three. It just happens to be there.
Yeah.
Some people, though, have never drawn that far west.
We can give you a path of blighted properties to drive by on your way.
Thank you.
Just follow the wind turbines.
Anything else? We'll see you all tomorrow morning at the board meeting. Thank you all.
Thanks.